Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the June 26, 2024 zoning board of adjustments meeting. Our next meeting will be July 31, 2024, 6:30 PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room. And if everyone could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with the right and justice for all.
Okay, and Rodney, if you could please read in the preamble?
Good evening to those in attendance and watching at home. For the benefit of those who have not previously attended a zoning board hearing, the procedure is as follows. The petitions will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. However, the chair may change the order at their discretion. The board will treat all petitioners, their representatives, abudders, and other interested parties fairly and with respect. The petitioner will be asked to give an overview of their petition, read through the responses to the criteria applicable to their case, allowing for the board to ask questions after each item. State law and local ordinances establish the criteria that must be met in order for the board to grant approval to a petition, and it is the petitioner's responsibility to demonstrate that they have met each criterion. Following the presentation, the chair will open the floor for public comment, either in favor or opposed to the request. If necessary, an opportunity for rebuttal will be offered to the petitioner and the public. However, discussion will not be allowed to devolve into back and forth arguments. All comments made shall be directed toward the chair. Should a question be asked, the chair will pose the question to the petitioner. Afterward, the chair will close the public hearing, and the board will deliberate and vote on the petition. At this time, please silence all mobile devices.
Sorry, anyone who's planning to speak tonight in any capacity, if you could please raise your right hand to be sworn in? And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. So for tonight, I am asking Wolf if you would be willing to sit in for Patrick for tonight? Okay, thank you. So we do have a full board. Alright, so the first item on our agenda is, or item number three, Deborah Chartier, petitioner owner, appeal from an administrative decision issued on March 22, 2024 that determined the activities taking place on the property are considered the same as a contractor's yard, parcels located at 390 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial, R4 Residential by Soils, and Aquafor Conservation elderly Housing overlay districts, tax map 40-3, lot 30, case CBA 2024-15. This item was continued from the last meeting, however, it is no longer necessary because we did grant the variance, but the appeal was left to be continued. So, Robert, we don't have to vote on that, do we? We just-
Just make a motion to deem it moot.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to deem this particular petition moot?
I'll so move.
Okay. Seconded by Wolf. Alright, all in favor? Alright. 5-0-0. That is now deemed moot. Next item is Conote LLC, petitioner owner, variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a subdivision of a property into four lots with frontages of 111.38 feet, 120.95 feet, 103.3 feet, and 30.85 feet, respectively, whereas 200 feet of frontage is required. Parcels located at 103 Severance Bridge Road in the R2 Residential by Soils in Aquafor Conservation Districts, tax map 3A, lot 55, case 2024-13, which was continued from May. And I don't think you were in the room when I was swearing people in, so if you could just please raise your right hand? And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Alright, thank you so much. You may begin.
Alright, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Matt Peterson with Keach Nordstrom Associates here, representing the proposed variance application in front of the board tonight at 103 Severance Bridge Road in Merrimack, New Hampshire. Some of the board members were here last month when we presented this, however, there was a 4-4 board, and we got stuck at 2-2. So I think because of the new members that are here, I should probably go through what we talked about at that, Mr. Chairman, to kind of bring them up to speed, or would they have read minutes and feel comfortable with what was presented at the last hearing?
I actually, I definitely think that you should, should kind of go through this again, but, yeah.
Maybe briefly.
Yeah.
Yep, that's fine. So as stated, this is located on Severance Bridge Road. We are, this house right here is kind of the middle of our property currently. This is in a butter to the west, and this would be a butter to the north. We have proposed a four-lot frontage subdivision. As the chairman stated, we need variances for the frontage of those lots that are there. We have 111 feet of frontage, 120 feet of frontage, 103 feet of frontage, and 30 feet of frontage. What I tried to explain at the last hearing, and I don't think I did a very good job of it, was that we had submitted this plan set to the planning board for planning board approval. As we got to the TRC with the DPW, and you have a letter now that I think you all got tonight from Dawn that I tried to explain last time, that she said, "We don't want this 300-foot cul-de-sac coming off the road. We don't want to maintain it, we don't want to deal with the drainage, we don't want the extra cutting that takes with that. We'd like you guys to look at what we came to zoning board with." So as I said last month, this was kind of a weird situation because we were asked by the town DPW to come with this layout instead of the layout we had. This layout here had the four lots that we talked about coming off the cul-de-sac. And what I said the last hearing is that there would be three lots off of that proposed cul-de-sac, and one other driveway that would come off for that. So what was talked about was, well, if you did four frontage lots, but two of them on common drives, you would actually be reducing the impact to those because one of the driveways on the project we submitted to the town was a town roadway, so 50-foot right-of-way, clearing the trees, drainage and stuff that goes along with that there. So this now reduces it down to two common driveways off of the parcel, and instead of having the town road. One of the things that was brought up the last hearing, and I have a plan over here, and sorry, I didn't put it up on PDF.
Matt, Matt, can you grab the mic?
One of the questions asked was, you know, what was the impact from cutting trees and stuff like that? I didn't have this exhibit last time. But this is what was sent to the town. This was what would be four lots with the houses shown, graded out. And the issue with this is dealing with drainages. We have to run a drainage line all the way back to this wetland here. So this is the limit of cutting that we would be looking at for this four-lot subdivision submitted to the planning board. If we were granted the variance tonight, this is the impact we would have for the tree cutting out there, and that's what Dawn's letter represents. This is about a 39.5% reduction or 40% reduction in the amount of area that we are cutting. And we're also leaving the buffer behind the abutter to the west with this layout that's there. This parcel is 13.65 acres in size. All these lots were over two acres in size with this layout that's here. Again, this is going to look more similar to what you see driving down the road with the four houses than the three around the cul-de-sac and one with it all opened up from there. So again, we submitted this to the town, they asked us to come back to you guys. I know there was some back and forth last month, so some people understood it, or not, everybody understood it. Some people agreed with it, some people did not. That was the only thing that was different. As far as the criteria, Mr. Chairman, would you like me to go through that as well?
Um, yes, please.
So, number one-
Alright, I'm sorry, hold one second.
Matt, can you show us where the two driveways are proposed? Because then, that's not on our layout.
So you guys should have this in front of you, correct?
No.
On the monitor.
On the monitor.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Yep, sorry, that's what I said. So, the first one here is almost identical to where the roadway would come in that we had proposed. And then the second one is located right here down the property line. So again, we put them on either side of the house that was there so that we weren't driving straight into living rooms and stuff like that with them. So the common driveways would be shown as they are on this plan here. Pan out? So this is one up in here, second one here. These would be the two off of the most westerly common driveway, and then these two are the other ones here.
Thank you.
First, it must not be contrary to the public interest because the requested variance is not expected to be contrary to public interest as it will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or threaten public health, safety, convenience, or general welfare. The project proposes new shared driveways to provide access to oversized parcels in lieu of construction of a new public road. The parent property is 13.65 acres in total area and can support four single-family homes. This proposal is the least impactful way of realizing the development potential of the property. Each of the shared driveways will adequate site distance, and generally speaking, less curb cuts on a public street is safer. Finally, spacing of the new homes will only benefit by proving this variance as they will not be 50-foot right-of-way condensing the front of the portion of the lot.
Any questions? Alright, and actually, I think for this, you can just-
Keep going.
Go straight through.
It must be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance, spirit and intent of the section of the Merrimack zoning ordinance to provide safe, adequate access and prevent overcrowding of the new development. This proposal accomplished both of these by reducing the number of curb cuts, providing more than adequate site distance as desired by the DPW, and providing more space for the house and lot development by not compressing the frontage of the new public road and the right-of-way. So as we showed on the little cul-de-sac coming in, we've got three homes around that there, whereas now these are spread out on the property, much more clear as we believe. It must result in substantial justice being done. Substantial justice may be measured by whether the loss to the individual is outweighed by the gain to the general public in denying the variance. If granting the variance would allow relief of a reasonable request by the applicant while not adversely impacting the general public, then substantial justice has been done. The applicant proposes construct four new single-family homes on reduced frontage lots with shared driveways, rather than construct a new road with the same number of homes. This request is reasonable because the new shared driveways will be privately maintained and not require public resources or expenditures like a new public road would. This reasonable request is not expected to adversely impact the public, therefore, substantial justice will be done by granting the variance. It must not diminish the value surrounding properties. The value surrounding properties is not expected to be diminished. The applicant intends to construct new market-rate housing, which tends to raise the value surrounding properties. Further, this, further, should this variance be denied, the applicant will follow through with the original proposals to construct a new road and four homes, which effectively will have the same effect of the property values. Therefore, negative impacts to the value of surrounding properties are not anticipated. Again, we're doing four lots, looking at four lots pre and post. And quite honestly, the four lots with the road is going to impact the abutter more with the drainage and stuff that would have to go up behind his house and cutting the trees there. Number five, it must be shown that denial would result in unnecessary hardship. The project proposal is consistent with the purpose of the zoning ordinance. The applicant is proposing a four-lot subdivision where each lot lacks the minimum required frontage but provides safe and reasonable access and is being developed in a more desirable way. The applicant's proposed shared driveways in lieu of constructing a new public roadway, thus shifting future maintenance replacement burdens to individual landlords instead of the town, while also allowing more space for lot development house spacing. The property is several times larger than adjacent properties and features moderate soils. Unlike adjacent properties on Severance Bridge Road, the topograph is moderately sloped along the adjacent to the road with steeper but not steep slopes to the rear of the property. The most desirable land is closer to the frontage of Severance Bridge Road and to the rear of lot 56. Seemingly, the purpose of the ordinance will be upheld by approving the variance which proposes a more aesthetically spacing, safer site distance, and reduced curb cuts, and less burdensome development, private maintenance. And then B, the proposed use is a reasonable one. The surrounding area is developed by single-family residential developments, and the proposed project provides more of the same uses. No additional density is proposed, and a new public road with four compliant lots is less desirable in this case. Allowing the frontage variance is reasonable for all the reasons mentioned above. Therefore, the proposed use is a reasonable one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thank you. Any questions from the board regarding this petition? Alright, so, real quick, for those of you who weren't here last month, the long and the short of it is that there was another plan that was proposed, which he was mentioning earlier. And that would add cost to the town by building a public road, one that would need to be maintained. So the reason why we have a variance here at all is because of this request that was also mentioned earlier from Dawn to try not to build more public roads that will incur more cost to the town. So with that being said, Robert, do I need to read this in?
You can if you'd like, unless the applicant, or petitioner, or whatever, would want it read in.
As long as everybody's got copies, that's part of the record there.
Yeah, other than that, it is on file.
Okay. So, yeah, and I do apologize for my part in the misunderstanding last, last month. It's definitely, I, it makes sense, it makes sense why we're doing this. So what I'll go ahead and do is open this up to the public. Is there anyone looking to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone looking to speak against this petition? I'll go ahead and close the public. Yes, Rodney?
I just have a general comment. Last month, and I don't think I heard it mentioned tonight, that this, this will be passed one way or the other. You are coming to us as a preference for two driveways, correct?
Correct. We've already submitted the four-lot with the road to the town, and meets the requirements. I would actually think I'd notice to go to a meeting if we had to pull that, yes.
Alright. So I'd, for the people that weren't here last month, I said-
Different plan.
Different plan, but something is going to go forward, with or without us, the zoning board. Thank you.
Yeah, so to kind of add on to that, granting this variance would be a benefit to the town. And that's, that's what we're, that's what we're looking at. So just a quick heads up. But with that being said-
It'll, it'll go forward if we vote for it to go forward. If we, if we approve this request for the variance.
If we deny this, a different thing will go forward.
The one with the public road.
The original plan never needed a variance. This plan was altered because the town-
I see what you're saying, okay.
The town doesn't want to have to maintain another road.
I don't blame them.
Okay, so, yeah. I'll entertain a motion?
I make a motion, the board finds the petitioner's responses to the statutory criteria are sufficient. Provided each criteria is met, and the board adopts the petitioner's responses as the board's finding of fact, and further, to grant the variances under 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit the subdivision of a property into four lots with frontage amounts of 111.38 feet, 120.95 feet, 103.30 feet, and 30.85 feet, respectively, whereas 200 feet of frontage is required to the subject following conditions in the memo.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Brian, seconded by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, 5-0-0. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry, we had to do this twice.
It's quite okay. I didn't do a good job presenting.
Came over when he wanted it to, so he's willing to come twice.
I'll admit, I selfishly liked the idea of the public road, but I understand.
But having these, having them, not, not having the public road means that those houses are now on lots that are consistent with the rest of Severance Bridge Road, which I like.
Correct. Do, I haven't really investigated Severance Bridge. Are they all non-conforming in their frontage?
No, they're all single-family on their own lot with their own driveway. You don't have cul-de-sacs going in with cluster houses, sort of.
Okay. Alright. So agenda item five, Chris and Lindsay Funch, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. Petitioners owners, variance under section 2.02.7A6 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a two-car garage with living space above 12.7 feet from the edge of the delineated wetland, whereas 40 feet is required. Parcels located at 6 Liberty Lane in the R4 Residential by Soils District, tax map 7D, lot 331, case ZBA 2024-16. And if you could please start by telling us a little bit about what you're looking to do, and then we can just move into the criteria.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board. Yeah, so basically, we moved into the house in November of last year. And at the time, we're interested in having a house with a garage. This one did not, but in appearance, had enough space for one. And at that time of the season, there was not really any evidence for much of what would then be realized to be wetland. There was some evidence of, there's runoff from the street that goes by that side of the house, so there was evidence of that, but we didn't know what that would be classified as. And when we had that surveyed, that was identified as delineated wetland, which then restricted the construction of anything within that, that 40 feet, that 40-foot setback.
Okay.
So, within, as regard to item one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the variance would not alter the character of the owner's or neighboring property. It would also not pose any threat to public health, safety, or welfare. Item two, the spirit of the-
Okay, sorry, you can, you, alright, is the board okay if we just kind of, alright, well, you can just read through it.
Okay. The proposed addition will not be closer, will not be any closer than approximately 13 feet from the delineated wetland boundary, and would extend an extra 12 feet maximum beyond the footprint of a pre-existing deck. The deck itself already encroaches upon that wetland setback, along with the soil added by the prior owner. Delineated wetland area serves as runoff for the surrounding area of the neighborhood. The addition of a slab or foundation as part of this may even limit the chances of further soil runoff into the wetland by serving as a retaining feature for nearby soil. Additionally, there are pre-existing structures in the neighborhood within 40 feet of equivalent delineated wetland boundaries. Item three-
I'm just, I do have a question, so, just in regards to something that, that's here. Is there any evidence or research that you've done to show that there will be a positive impact to the wetland by building this slab? I only ask because that's what you put.
I mean, it will, so the, my kind of thinking on that, right, is that, so, because there's, I guess, yeah, I don't have an image of it, but so, the, I'm not sure which prior owner, but a previous owner had taken down a number of trees in the back and front yard to open up space, and then filled in all of that with dirt. And so, kind of near where the proposed garage would be, there's, I don't know, maybe like a five-to-six-foot drop that then goes down into that delineated wetland area. And so, but currently, everything around that is all just open soil. And so the thinking is that, right, once you put a fixed structure in the ground there, that's limiting what soil is available to continue that, that runoff.
Okay, alright, do you have any concerns of maybe ground shifting and causing issues with the, with the foundation that you put down?
I don't think, not based on the, we have, we've, we've had two general contractors come to look at the proposed area, and neither of the, they're, both of their only concerns were the, kind of the zoning question of, with regards to the positioning of that water, but not with regards to any risk of the actual structure itself.
Okay, so any concern of like, the, the land coming out from under from just-
No.
Soil movement, alright. I only ask because unfortunately, I've dealt with something very similar to this exact scenario, so I get terrified when I see that. But, I'm sorry, yeah, continue.
No, no, I appreciate it. Granted variance would reduce substantial justice because it would provide the opportunity for the owners to garage their vehicles, thereby protecting them from extreme weather events and possibly lowering their insurance costs. Some abutting houses and others within the neighborhood already have garages or the ability to add one without the need for a variance. This would not diminish the values of surrounding properties because some abutters and numerous properties in the surrounding neighborhood, as I mentioned, have garages or similar additions. Therefore, this variance would not significantly change the character of the area and have no direct impact on the values of surrounding properties. By enabling the construction of a garage, the variance would add value to the petitioner's property, which could positively impact the value of surrounding properties without impeding their existing views, access, aesthetics, et cetera. The garage doors would be standard height on the order of seven to eight feet, not differing in appearance from the neighborhood. Unnecessary hardship. This variance is therefore necessary to enable reasonable use of the property. The runoff that I mentioned that establishes a delineated wetland was created when the neighborhood was built in the 1970s. A diverter on the city-owned street adds water directly upstream of the property, thereby helping to ensure the wetland status is continued. Abutting properties benefit from this contained runoff but are not limited by it for similar property changes like the one proposed. While the existing home is certainly livable, it does not allow for the same level of flexibility as the abutters, without the exception, this variance would allow. I noted four of eight abutting properties already have either a garage, and two others likely have some form of an addition, so there's no substantial change to the character of the area. Additionally, there is a pre-existing deck which already encroaches into that 40-foot setback of the wetland. The addition that would be constructed after this, after the approval of this variance would replace that structure, changing the overall footprint very little from the original.
Alright, thank you. Any questions from the board on this petition? Go for it.
The driveway that is, that paved driveway that is shown on, on, on the drawing-
Yes.
You're probably parking your vehicles there right now, right?
Yes.
Is that, is there an incline that, you know, faces towards, you know, downhill towards the wetland currently, or towards the road?
It's-
Or is it fairly level?
It's relatively level.
Okay.
The driveway itself is level, like perfectly level.
Yeah, I mean, like the- Yeah, I mean, any, I mean, any runoff from the driveway itself is either going probably to either side of the yard, and so obviously on one side, it is then closer to-
Right.
The, that wetland area.
Okay. But in the end, if you were to park the vehicles in the garage, the runoff would be probably a bit, a little bit better contained, right? Could you direct it potentially towards the sewer, anywhere?
Well, no, so that's the, there, there is no, on that cul-de-sac, there is no sewer. Or like, I mean, like, there is, sorry, I mean, there is a, we have, we have sewer access, but like, in terms of any, I guess, I'm thinking of like, storm runoff, right? That's, so at the, basically, kind of at the, the very end of that circle, at the top of like, the kind of south, yeah, southwest corner of our property, there's a cutout in the circle, and so all the runoff from the street goes into that.
Which becomes the wetland.
Yes, so there's no, there's no water.
So that's all draining into the wetlands.
It's all draining into the wetlands, yeah.
So in a nutshell, a car parked in the garage would, at least, some would be contained by the garage, right?
Sure.
Any runoff, so, okay, thank you. Thanks.
Okay. So are there any other questions for, for, are there, are there any other questions from the board before I open the public? Alright. I have to do this, even though this-
You have to do it.
I have to do it. I'll open this up public. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor or against this petition?
Maybe Grace wants to speak.
Well, I, I will note, obviously, this doesn't count for much here, but so, we, we do have kind of verbal approval from talking with two of our neighbors, and I can give the lot IDs and that. And then we, we received in our mail, one written approval from another abutter, and I can present that as however is necessary.
I'm pleased you approached them before coming here.
Typically, when they're not here, that's an automatic approval.
That's what I told, one of them was like, was like, "Do I need to go?" And I was like, "No," I was like, "If you want to write a letter, you can, but I'm assuming that any absence will be considered like their, their approval, so."
If they didn't want you to do it, they'd be here.
That's, that, yeah, exactly.
And trust me, they'd all be here. Alright, so with that being said, I'll go ahead and close the public, and do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that the board grants the petitioner's responses to the statutory criteria are sufficient. Approved each criterion is met, and the board adopts the petitioner's responses as the board's finding of fact, and further, to grant the variance under section 2.02.7, capital A, six of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a two-car garage with living space above 12.7 feet from the edge of a delineated wetland area, whereas 40 feet is required.
Second.
Alright, motion made by Lynn, seconded by Brian. All in favor? 5-0-0. Now, just, just a heads up, not that this happens that often. You have a 30-day window where someone could actually come back and appeal this, and then we'd have to rehear it, so-
Okay.
If you do anything in the next 30 days, it's at your own risk. But other than that, congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is not looking promising.
No, and I have questions. So, after what happened last month, have, have USA Chicken been notified?
Yes. And, and let's, let's read the, the agenda item before we keep going with the discussion, and I'll be happy-
Sorry?
Yep.
Good point. Item number six, USA Chicken, petitioner and SBNK Meramec LC, CEO Trammell Crowe, CEO, owner, request for rehearing of case ZBA twenty twenty-four dash eleven, in which the board denied a special exception under two point oh-two point thirteen of the zoning ordinance, or D two C of the zoning ordinance, to permit a drive-through food service use in the Town Center Overlay District, parcels located at four twenty-one Daniel Webster Highway, and the C two general commercial elderly overlay in Town Center Overlay Districts, tax map five D dash four, Lot ninety-one, case ZBA twenty twenty-four dash eleven. And we're rehearing this because, uh, we made a mistake on how we voted on this. Apparently, a two-two vote was not, um, enough to dismiss this. They, they would've had to be reheared.
Did do anything.
Yeah, which was something that we were told at another point in time, but is factually false. So, with that being said, how do we, do we just continue it?
Uh, make a motion to grant the rehearing, and you can just end it if you're, if you, that's what you feel you wanna do.
Oh, it's a mo-, it's a request for rehearing?
Yes, yep. It's, it's a motion, it's, the official term is motion for rehearing, but that, yeah.
I thought it was an automatic rehearing because of what happened.
No.
No, you, they have to put in the formal request and lay all the evidence out, and you have to read whatever's in their letter and base your decision on that to see if you find substantial ground that the board aired or, um, that new evidence had been presented.
Okay. I can absolutely tell you the board aired that night, so we absolutely should rehear this. So I'll entertain a motion?
So moved. I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Brian, seconded by Lynn. All in favor? All oppose, abstain? All right, four zero one, one abstention. All right, and that brings us to-
Excuse me, who was the abstention, sorry?
Wolf, he was not here.
I wasn't present that night, so I didn't feel-
Would I be allowed to vote since I wa-, I was here, however, I'm an alternate tonight?
Actually.
So you can't vote, you're an alternate.
But-
But I was here last week.
But he brings up a good point. Should he, should we have-
It really doesn't matter in that case because in the role of the board members, it's assumed that whoever's coming in has read the minutes and is, is up to speed, so it really doesn't matter.
Oh, that, sorry, that was, I, I, that was a good question, I didn't know. So for seven, annual meeting, election of officers, and review of rules of procedure. Of course, I left the rules of procedure at home, not thinking about it again. I would like to push this out a month. Um, I know that's probably an extremely unpopular opinion at this point, but, um, there are a lot of moving pieces.
Election of officers and the procedures?
Yes. The, the procedures have been reformatted, so they're different, but I don't know how structurally they're different, and we couldn't really have a conversation about it at the last board meeting. I, of course, have the new copy and left it at home. That's not why I wanna postpone the election, though. That's, I, I'd like to postpone the election because we have a few moving parts. First is, we, the board was told earlier this, or I was notified earlier this week that Brian was no longer on the board.
Right.
Then I was told today that Brian is on the board. Chuck is out for an unknown period of time. We don't know how that is going to play out. And I actually wanted to use this as an opportunity to introduce, uh-
Scott.
Scott Sabans. Um, so, hi, Scott. So, uh, Scott has interviewed for a position and has been, um, signed off and approved by myself and town council. So if a position opens, it's automatic. But we don't really know what is going on. Like, I still am trying to find out what the story is with Chuck, to find out if that alternate position is there. Um, and we still technically need the approval process to go through on Brian before we, we do any kind of voting. Um, some of the concerns I have also, as Ben has, uh, mentioned, he wants to step down from the vice chair role.
So he could be chairman. He could be vice chair, he could be chairman.
I have a feeling if you nominate him for chairman, we'll have a full member position open too. So, yeah, uh, a- as far as that goes, I, I do wanna wait another month just because I wanna see how-
I have no problem with that.
How that's gonna play out. For the record, I would like to step down from chair, but I'm not- That, that's, that's kinda where I expected that to go. But, yeah, so if I could get a motion to continue this to the July meeting, I would appreciate that.
I'll so move.
Okay, um, motion made by Lynn, seconded by Ben. All in favor? All right, so five zero zero, that will get moved to the July meeting. Discussion, possible action regarding other items of concern. Everyone say hi to Scott. Hi, Scott. So, uh, that is, uh, all I've got for other items. Um, the approval of minutes, um, you'll notice that we have two sets of minutes here. We couldn't actually approve the minutes for the prior month last month because some of us were missing.
Yep.
So-
So which ones?
We're looking at the, so the first set of minutes that we've got to approve is the April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four minutes.
I'll move, we approve the minutes of April twenty-fourth, uh, as distributed.
All right, motion made by Lynn, seconded by, uh, Ben. All in favor?
All right.
All oppose, all abstain? All right, four zero one. Wolf, you were there that night.
I was there, yeah, I'm sorry, I was in the room.
Okay, do, do you wanna motion in favor?
I do.
Okay, so five zero zero for the April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes.
And I'll do the same thing for the May thirtieth meeting, as distributed.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
On page twelve. At the very top, where there was a motion made, made by Rod Buckley, seconded by Ben Niles, and then it was voted against by Patrick Dwyer and Ben Niles. There's no reference to Rich's vote there. There's only three votes showing on that line. Rod Buckley, seconded by Ben, and then voted by Rod, Ben, and Pat, Patrick.
Nobody notices me.
You're invisible.
Typically, um-
Should they?
No, typically, they only mention the ones that were opposed to it. So if you weren't Patrick or Ben, it's assumed that you were the ones voting in, in favor.
But what, but Rich does not appear on here at all-
Right.
As a plus or a negative.
I voted in favor, but I did not make a motion.
He didn't make the motion or seconded it.
So him, him voting in favor does not mean he doesn't need to show up?
That's correct.
All right. Then I second your motion.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I can't second it.
All oppose, abstain?
Rod can't second that, I need a new second.
Oh, no, you can't.
What's up?
Rod's not seated, I need a new second.
I can't, I can't second it.
Oh, you're right, I need a second.
I'll, I'll second.
All right, seconded by Brian. All in favor? All in favor? Yep, all right, all oppose, all abstain. Four zero one, Wolf in the abstention.
Okay. Boy, I don't feel very special tonight.
Yeah.
We can change that.
All right, so approved minutes, so that means we only have one more approval, or one more, uh, item.
I move, adjourn.
All right.
Second.
Technically, you don't need to, but that's all right.
All right, all in favor? All right, five zero zero.